Our prayerman, I'm Justin Sukian, and then Noah George will be the new pledge.
Father of heaven, gather here tonight, thankful to have many blessings. We're thankful to live in such wonderful community and thankful for our patrons, our students, our staff. In order to discuss the business and we will watch orders together, but we say these things in another sentence.
At the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Have before us the agenda for the evening. Does anyone have any comments or questions on the agenda? Okay, can I entertain a motion for improvement on our agenda?
We're failing.
Motion by Rick Parker, second by Mr. Sukian. Are you? You told me you'd have this power, but I feel like I need to. Okay, any further discussion? All those who may say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Anyone have any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Agreeing that the consent agenda is to provide the answer consent. I believe we have Mr. George here tonight to give us the medical report.
And since you haven't been here, that microphone right there, if you just tap the button and you'll be on. Perfect.
Testing, testing. Alright, here we go. I am here to tell you a little bit about my home, Medical High School. This month we had a successful period of online schooling. I don't know better between in-person, but I'm glad we have that option. Red House from Restless German, and the rest of the team recently had their senior night. Boys basketball won a JV championship against the Jerome team. And boys basketball recently had their senior night as well. The Booster Club donated donuts for that senior night, and I had the opportunity to hand them out to those in attendance there. Some Medical Brothers Club students attended the Brothers Club show in Florida. And several choir students participated in all state choir. As a famous today GM State Leadership Conference in Fort Hall during the first week of February. And they learned a lot there about leadership, about communication skills. Today in the medical FFA, the team is in action to develop that day carnation and deliver it throughout the game. This week is our medical high school whole week, sponsored by our Hope Squad, which is our peer-based suicide prevention program. So we have activities throughout every day of the week during lunchtime. And we also had a very exciting fundraiser for now school. If the students in that high school raise a thousand dollars, I'll be shaving my head. And if it raises three thousand dollars, our vice principal, Mr. Carroll, will be shaving his head. And I have a funeral rendition, if you're interested in that. All of those proceeds will be donated to our medical Hope Squad and used for more fun activities and for suicide prevention. The student body is at our state conference on February 28th, and that will be in the morning. Any questions? We're having a great year.
What grade are you in this year?
I'm a senior.
Who are seniors, okay. Well, thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight. Do you really have any questions, or Mr. George?
You should be asking what you've been doing, and we ask you.
I don't see that at all.
Yeah, yeah, I'll bring it up. I'll bring it up, too. Thank you very much.
We have you, Mr. Harrison, tonight. So does that come off? You're the volunteer. That is Dr. Harrison's professor. Actually, we have Dr. May Porter up here.
Yep. Do you need help?
She got it.
You got it.
So we're here, Mount Harrison High School, and as always, our mission is to support and empower.
I think it's on, just pull it, I think it's on, yep, just pull it closer, yep. Yeah.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
You gotta get a little closer to it.
Alright, Mount Harrison's mission is to support and empower success. Tonight, instead of just starting with the regular good news, I want to talk a little bit more about alternative high schools. As you know, a lot of people really don't understand. And so in this, I got the boys with the last unit. I gave them a simple survey, and these are some of the answers that they gave me. The first question is, what struggles brought you to Mount Harrison? Some of the answers that I gave that were given, multiple classes were stressful. Family problems, saying homework in attendance difficult, feeling lost at a large school. Mental health troubles, struggles with online schooling, moving around a lot, too many people. Somebody said, I have to pay bills and my attendance paid for it. I can't take work home because it will not get done. I have to take care of my siblings, trouble focusing, suicidal, self-harm, and running away. Mental health issues tend to be one of the biggest things that brings students to the alternative high school. And a lot of times, it's just something as simple as anxiety. So then the second question I asked them was, how does Mount Harrison help you? And some of the answers that I received, I feel like people care about in here. And it's not that teachers don't care about what they have in Monaco or other large schools. It's because a lot of times, students, especially those with anxiety, feel overwhelmed and lost in such a large crowd. And so it's very difficult when you have thirty-minute and forty-five-minute classes, and teachers have one hundred and fifty kids a day, to really feel like your value. And we have the advantage of one hundred and sixty kids in the whole school. So if you're, one teacher is not going to feel valued, hopefully another one is, so they have more opportunities to feel valued. Another student said, I dropped out, now Harrison let me re-enroll. Credit recovery is helping me get the credits with my attendance issues. More one-on-one help and usually smaller class sizes. Less stress at school helps with my home life. I've gotten help with my mental health here. And that is one thing that medical schools do really well, is that partnership request. We utilize that every year. It's just having those mental health professionals come in and help some of our students. Again, help when I need it. Teachers are doing more to break things down, it's safe for me, and I feel like I'm accepted here. So, so that's what we're really all about. And so how do we make Mount Harrison a good place for students? Well, this year we're trying really hard to build a culture of learning and respect. And some of the ways that we do that is first off, with our student council. So I'm going to turn it over to Noah.
Hi, my name's Kier, I'm a junior. Hi, my name is Justice, I'm a senior. Um, one more question. And this is the person any of them has spoken to. We want to play a dance that was supposed to be today, but we just got the school voters. It was supposed to, so we're moving into sprinkling, and I'm pretty sure we're going to do it like last day of the conference.
Make sure you talk right into that microphone, Kay.
Uh, we got three new members who stood in council. Uh, Justice, right here, she's no. Uh, we got another one, his name's Adrian, he had to go. And we got new students, and his name's. And seven students are planning to graduate.
You guys know the Keystone Cops?
Yeah. Um, we're having, we had kindness week this week. Um, and today, we had to tell someone that they made a difference in our life and say aye. Um, we hired a full-time, a full-time aide named Sarah Bernard. And she has been helping with getting help and get our work done. And she comes a lot to school because people have a problem in school, she takes them in. They can have a break too, like we said, and they have to run to their room. Uh, we also, um, on our week that we weren't here, students could come and get computers. Or if they didn't have internet, then they could come get packets. We held, we had a student night conference on Thursday. Uh, and we donated food for everyone, for Idiots' Day. Um, and it's going to be canceled, our, our dance, uh, we had to do the photo booth, which is that. And during classes, people could go and take pictures. And while, we also, we handed out a piece to all the students because it got canceled. And they are postponing, they postponed. Oh, I forgot to put the paper on back there.
Okay, I have one more question, guys, before you leave. So you just voted for a larger crowd for the first time, now you have to come shave our hands. Do you have any like, parents, daughters, who can you embarrass their children? I think our job is to embarrass kids.
I want you guys to know, especially Justice, I'm going to put you on the spot here. Justice is a senior, and she has avoided speaking in class her life. So she's never even spoken in a class of eighteen students, and we made her do this.
Very good.
Her first month in student council, so. And the reason we got new members is because we had three of our former members that graduated in December. So they left us, we tried to fail them, but it didn't work. Anyway, this is Maslow, too. Maslow is in training to be a therapy dog. He's training the kids really well. He will have the kids trained by the end of the year that they know that they are supposed to pick. Shiding lights sometimes, but most of the time, he's just a teenager and he belongs in high school, so. Anyway, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I think it's after Maslow's hierarchy needs.
It was named after him because dogs should be on every single step of the hierarchy needs.
One of the other things that we're doing at Mount Harrison this year is lunchy mart. This is our, we have a class called Young Entrepreneurs. And they have opened a lunchy mart, and really, they sell sugar-free snow cones. And they don't make money off of it, it's just all part of the curriculum. So it's, the money that they make is just enough to pay for buying more snow hogs. But they're learning how to be entrepreneurs, and that's part of the class. The other big thing, just like Monaco, we also have a Hope Squad. And I have our Hope Squad volunteer here to talk to today, this is Jackie Santos. Someone let her talk to that Hope Squad.
Hi, I'm Jackie Santos from Mount Harrison, and I'm in Hope Squad, I'm a junior. And in Hope Squad, we've been working a lot on QPR, which is Question Persuade Refere. And that's where we learn how to ask students questions if they can pay for help. And we help persuade them to go get help from Miss Woodward or Miss Stevenson, so that they take them to Ariel, who's our counselor. And that's the refer parts. And we've been learning a lot about the warning signs, about teens being depressed or suicidal. And we've been learning how to ask questions to students to make sure they're okay, and to make sure that they feel wanted and not alone at our school. And we've been working on Hope Week, which sadly got postponed, but we're going to do it around before spring break. And it's where we, every morning, we have a list to all the students. And one day, we have one to have day, and we do activities where the kids can earn tickets and then go get prizes. And yeah, that's pretty much it, we've been working on it in Hope Squad.
So I do have the study that Mount Harrison has the meanest principal in the entire district, because she made them postpone the Mount High Dance and Hope Week. And that's because of all the instructional time that was already lost. I just that we can't afford to lose any more instructional time. We've created her quarter rather than first semester, so, so much of it got eaten out of third quarter, that we weren't going to make it through the third one, so. So, yes, it was the mean principal in all of that. So that's basically what's going on at Mount Harrison. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you for bringing your information to us. We appreciate it. Thank you. Sir, does anyone have any comments or questions on the administrative department or creating reports?
You're good now.
You know that the lists that you have in middle schools are now one hundred percent questioning, and there are people who are trained to use them, right?
Correct.
How many did you get trained at your school?
Oh, we probably had ten. I mean, we got the night custodian, the day custodian, all the people that might work with our students throughout the day, plus their backup people, so. It's about that many, yeah.
So that moves you, yeah?
Yep, every day.
Okay.
Every day, yeah.
Mind you all said.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, anybody else have anything to notice? Okay. Mr. Renzi, would you please fill us in on Christian Ed Robert James?
The gentleman representing the Christian Ed Association say that the original contract you were supposed to build a fence on the north side. And now they want a fence on the east side. Yes, north, anyways. And my response is, all the other fences in Monaco were jumping six or eight feet, that's what we're going to do. He didn't specify what kind of fence, he just said fence, so I'm assuming that would fulfill their request. We go, I don't know, I'm tired of talking about it, it wasn't taking forever. Well, it means, as he said, I'll sign contract.
No, they get to sign it, they send over the changes. We'll sign it, I will send them.
And then it goes to the tile.
Yeah, then we get a closing date on the file.
Anyway, yes, we got, we're ready on him, so, okay, the final version of the contract.
And the main thing, one of the main things is it provides you more opportunity, so.
Wider access to your public wealth property. Right now, you have a twenty-foot athletic space that's school-owned. Now it's going to be increased by point seven acres. So I'm not sure what the width is, but it's, it's on triple, but you'll have enough space where you can have two-way traffic without fear. Yes, right.
Okay. Does anyone have any further comments or questions regarding? You know that that contract is for us, because I just figured this out, so. Um, we have a simply bank request form, simply bank certification of healthcare provider form. For discussion, we have, the form was in our board book. Did anybody have any comments or questions on what they saw? Is anybody needing the answer regarding the request for this, this request form? Just in a short discussion. Okay. Do you have any questions? Mr. Renzi on his superintendent board?
Yeah.
Here's one that I felt, Riverdale Elementary. Uh, we have been on the parking lot, it was happening there.
He has ordered, starting Acre One. That's really out there.
A-Street basis.
A-Street. It's three layers wide aside, remember, he has humped it like that to lay closer to the sidewalk. It was loading lane, and put up those plastic warning sticks for the rest of the school year to see if that leads to ingestion on Eighteenth Street. If it does, then we will make plans to do a loop in construction where we park us over there, the little kids, it reduces the traffic on Eighteenth Street, because buses can, parents.
And then are we doing anything on the east side there, or west side?
That land is owned by a gentleman represented by Mr. Gibson, he came to. That land is owned by a gentleman represented by Mr. Gibson. He came to me, but we figured out together that the cost of the road going across the back of our playground is so much higher than the amount of money that they would have come in. So he recommended that we do it, but I agree with him because of the cost. If we need more parking, the only viable option is you continue there north. And remember that building, there's a little building right there on the corner on the north end of the existing block, though. My recommendation is you have to park it going out as far as you can go. Maybe no, we should park it, that gives them extra space that they can use to play in the snow. That would increase the remaining feet that you would have as far as space for us to be aligned below the whole shelf. That's all we could be, but progress appears to stop us.
I'd like to ask Mr. Randy, how do you report the county championship recognition, kind of, in a nutshell?
I, uh, I was invited to partnership with the County Schools, Ms. Miller. It was a gentleman, Lederbo First, and she spoke about their upcoming summer election. And I talked about that Munderburg County Schools has nine mascots, and I knew every one of them. Which is a lot of people for me. We talked about code new programs and ladies going on each side. I made the principals give me two minutes worth of information, and I took nine schools, I was in the, I was standing there for thirty minutes. Nobody had any questions, so I was grateful for that.
Did you talk about the girls?
It was on my, uh, I told them that I've spoken with the gentleman, Mr. Austin, Austin? He says there's four hundred lots in various spaces of development in Rupert and Paul. I talked to Mr. Morley at Haber, and he says there's five hundred and forty lots in Haber in various spaces of development. Four hundred and five hundred and forty, that's a chunk of houses. And it's gonna end up being several children, and likely we don't have the space. At this time. But yes, I did, I shared all of that and put a plug in for bus drivers, and ladies over there. That's a hard sell.
So any further questions, Mr. Ramsey? Okay, moving on. There was a fund request from the business for Latino action. So fundraising request, did anyone have any comments or questions on that? This is where the activities are being taken. Remember, it's not how many. I agree to it. Your question, yes, I do have, they don't have it. It's been asked by the regret, it's two years ago, so I know, and they have to do your catch, so... Anybody have any questions? Not that I would entertain a motion for approval of the team's election fundraiser request. Motion by Mr. Can to approve. Second by Mr. Anderson. Any further questions, discussion, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. West Chair has asked for fundraiser requests as well, and...
Is there a go to this next?
Marissa, you have any questions?
Negative, presented in a later date, anyone more research to do?
Oh, Charles. Was that the hope?
Same as Wes, it's, uh, fine. Yes, so we just need to approve over this. Anybody have any comments or questions? And I would entertain a motion that we approve the West Chair fundraiser request.
I approve the West Chair, Cheerleader fundraiser request.
Motion by Dr. Parker.
Second by Mr. Perez, any questions?
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. East Monaco Chair's team is also wanting to do some fundraising. They have presented a request, does anyone have any comments or questions regarding their request? It's in the board book.
What are the tickets for? These activities are... Do I answer you? Do I do that?
You need to grab the microphone.
Hi. Um, so we want the authentic school carnival, how the, you know, when you go to the carnivals and they play games and they get cotton candy and popcorn and do an option, they'll have optional items that they'll raffle off. And this is a basic school carnival. Oh, so you're doing the carnival? Yes. Okay, that's, I can figure out whether you're supporting.
Do you have a date, Julie, you said March nineteenth or what?
Um, yeah, so March nineteenth, we don't have a time set yet because we do have a play going on that day also. And we don't want to interfere with, um, the play, so I talked to Mr. Heath this morning and he is considering a matinee for the play and having me do the school carnival at night, which works perfect for me. I told him I'm good either way, so, um, I can go either way, I can move.
You have one request, would you mind using your name?
My name's Jamie Walker.
It needs to go to the events as well, so...
Okay.
Any questions for Jamie?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. Otherwise, yes. So, I entertain a motion for approval of the East Monaco Chair fundraising request.
Chair, I have a motion to approve the East Chair for this request.
Motion by Mr. Can.
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson, any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We do need to officially approve changes on the official property, such as being the best, if they're requesting. We don't have a cost on that yet, do we?
We have all the channeled, and you've got several rooms channeled in your storage, it doesn't matter the labor. And I put a...
I think they would be an house.
Yes.
Any further questions at office? And I entertain a motion for approval of changes on the official property.
Chair, I have a motion to approve the changes on the official property.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Motion by Mr. Perez, and second by Mr. Can. No questions, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We are now to approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar. I'm really not sure which way I want to say, which way to go. I'm a little bit... I still have to go to the best. Does anybody on the... Any of you on board have any more questions or thoughts regarding calendars that we presented tonight? Especially if someone here answers or just stands in front of administrators. Ernie? What did you say? Do you want to give me options?
A lot of the options are necessarily perfect, but it's something the committee did, put in some significant work to get there. As I'm looking at it as a parent, I lean towards calendar B. Just my thoughts, just that I was looking at it, I think we did, you know, a little couple of that in the family isn't a big deal. I know I'm planning around holidays, the official timing of Christmas is something that that I and all those people I need to communicate with, uh, we're going to see that as of time.
Yes, I do know that there is definitely a difference in the number of days right in the, right after the A and B calendar, we have a fairly significant difference in number of days from the first semester versus the second semester. And how do D more equalizes that side, correct?
Correct. So if you look at these really tiny numbers down here. So also know that these numbers don't reflect the semester count for seniors in the second semester. Like, so when you're looking at the second semester, right on this, so on calendar, we'll go approved calendar, which we refer to as calendar A. Semester one says sixty-eight days, semester two says seventy-eight. Remember that seniors end quite a few days before the other students. So that semester two will always show a little more than semester one. No, it shouldn't, if it was even, it wouldn't be this much. So when you look at calendar D, you're seeing sixty-nine and seventy-five. That one hasn't pretty even for seniors in semester one and two.
Ask him, my calendar B shows sixty-five.
Well, I might not be able to read either. Okay, yeah, I wasn't looking at calendar B. So calendar B shows sixty-five and eighty. So what we did on calendar B, if you go back to calendar A, we took out Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, three days there. Out of semester one. But that, you then, you added a few days on semester, at the end. No. See, I get confused with them. And yeah, we added a few at the end, but not as many as we took away. A lot of that on the calendar depends on what day the holiday falls in the year. So some years you're gonna have a really good calendar that everybody loves, and in other years, it's a lot dependent on what day Christmas is.
So between calendar A, approved calendar, there's ten days difference. Calendar B, there is fifteen days difference.
Let me pull up the Excel sheet.
Fifteen days difference on calendar B, and calendar B has significantly fewer. And yes, I'm using the ninety-five class.
Yeah, it's really small.
Did anybody on the calendar committee want to just keep calendar?
Yes, there were some.
But not as many of them wanted to keep?
No, and I think it comes to that two week Christmas break.
So on calendar, first calendar, approved calendar. It also needs to be on the morning day.
Yes.
The only difference is back in Christmas, you don't have two weeks.
Right. So the approved calendar A is very similar to what we've gone to school this year.
And calendar B has a week after, all the way to the end of December. And that is true right after the new year.
Right, so we would go back to school on January third.
Right, and then calendar D, you have a week off after, you know.
So can we have the names of the committees so when the parents complain?
Just send them to me. I, like, so on these calendars, I think is kind of a different experience that I've had with the calendar committee before because there are just as many people arguing for one calendar as another. There really isn't a clear cut, we hate this calendar. And I, there are some people on the committee that actually, once we did D, they're like, mm, that didn't really end up quite how we wanted it. I actually, can I go back to A or B?
No bad choices.
Okay, I'm going to do a, anybody in this conference has, do you have preference? Do you have preference? Everybody tell me your preference one at a time.
If you're in a discussion, you can share information.
Yep, that's fine.
We're looking at changing, that's what we want to do.
You can, you can say you want calendar A. If you choose calendar A, you have a minor change that needs made to it, so...
I, I would go with calendar B.
I don't love going after the morning day, first parent, but the two weeks around, I mean, it's, you know, it's... I realize that there's, I'm not terribly opposed to our approved calendar. I thought it was set up pretty well, but I'm also not giving discredit the amount of work that the calendar committee has put into it, so I would say I would, I would probably lean slightly to B.
Slightly to B, okay. I'm gonna be in B.
Sorry. I can be tough, yeah.
Okay, just getting where we are. Hey, can I get to any parents calling me to late at that two weeks out? Yes, I do.
Would that two weeks happen long?
Yes. This is the first year in a long time we have this.
I don't, I don't hear any complaints, because I've been on board as long. But I do have kids that are in the school system, and as that, I would go for B. You know, it's easier planning around that, traveling to family, whatever it may be, so I'd go B.
I don't want to read the road, we don't have to speak, but... I know, anyway. That's difficult, I see it coming. So, does anyone have a reason why they think that we should approve calendar A? I guess all my parents, sometimes their kids lose too much every major, those two weeks they're out. They have to start over. They're out, they're out too long. A lot of them don't travel. Some do, but they do the women an amount of time that is given to them. If they gain two weeks, they can take two weeks. So, I know teachers like two weeks, that's given, but I just don't know with parents, so... Mr. Perez?
Yeah, so I also feel like I'm going with the parents and voting for B, earlier we had a report. We took the parents that either voted number one, their priority being two weeks off of Christmas, or number two, the number's gonna be forty-six percent of the patrons and parents voted in that favor. So whereas I know that no matter what we decide, there's going to be some parents that are complaining, um, it seemed to me that as the information was put towards the parents, uh, they leaned towards B. And then again, I'm speaking now, not as a, as a committee member, but as a parent. And that aspect, I also prefer B.
How many did the survey?
I'm good at multitasking, but this is like putting me to the... I probably, yeah, I probably do.
I know, because there's a lot of them that don't have the internet, so they probably need to get it.
So I actually feel like this survey was filled out more than any survey I've done. I'd have to go find the numbers. And so I'm gonna give you completions. One thousand one hundred and seventy parents slash patrons completed the survey. Over two thousand viewed the survey, but eleven hundred.
Over two thousand surveyed.
They viewed it, yeah, so some of them didn't actually finish. They viewed it, yeah, so some of them didn't actually finish it.
Could you, um, how is it a number? It's a quarter of our student population.
Um, Jeff? What was the other calendar, who, uh, one word? Look at, change, use your.
A.
Yeah, A, one year.
Typically, B approved.
Three years.
And a top two years.
So this one's been approved.
So it would have been approved in the last year, this year's calendar.
Yeah, when we moved to a four-day week.
But it's very common that we will look at it and begin and change it, especially when we have feedback, when people want to be in the line of calendar. So that would be the reason we're looking at it, if you know what I'm thinking about. Some people, I know, they're not happy with us not having a complete two-week break at Christmas this year.
That's how I would make it look like that. You have a vote to do that.
So, and, and that's kind of how they think.
Can I give you one more piece of information? I forgot. Um, so calendar D gives elementary four hours beyond our state requirement. And, no, seniors four hours. Now I'm gonna have to look that up, make sure I'm not telling you wrong, oh my gosh.
So calendar D gives seniors?
Calendar D gives elementary seven hours beyond state requirements, and high school seniors four hours. Calendar B, uh-huh, calendar B puts elementary twelve hours above the requirements, and high school seniors nine hours above the requirements.
Calendar B also put.
During two days. Yes. Yes. Just giving you all the facts. And then calendar A would be similar on the hours to calendar B, 'cause at the same number of days.
Okay. Do you feel like you have a situation?
Are we reading that right? We're allowed hours over for elementary on B, nine hours over for secondary.
Seniors. And the, and the reason I tell you seniors is seniors finish a little earlier, so your freshmen to juniors are gonna have a little more than the senior hours, yeah.
So at least for secondary, at least they get that.
That might be the way to go.
Okay, entertain a motion, if anyone in this board is, when I'm chair, anything? Two. I don't have any, sorry.
I will take calendar B, if you agree with that. If you are making.
I make a motion for calendar B, B as in board.
B as in board.
Board.
Actually, because it actually gets our kids home classroom.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to accept calendar B as a Bravo.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Perez. Is that through the discussion or consideration?
Well, apparently on the survey, there was a lot of parents, or a lot of people that answered the survey, so they didn't like it. Okay, I said we gotta go with another.
So then we are going last day of school, there's a gym. If we can step out. Teacher, are we able to help? Um... On Bravo. Go south, sir.
Yes.
It goes down under where I have this control. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept calendar B, the extended time that it gets, and, and then it goes to gym. So we have, is moving second in? The second, just send us. Ready?
I'm good, man.
Okay. All those in favor of calendar B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we have a calendar. Motion carries. Bravo. All right. So we move now into policies, we are down to... Policy one, first of all, let me just explain, the first one is custody zones, which is policy one one zero point zero zero. It is an update from the state, there had to be a little bit of changing lines, so that each of the zones within our district of the five zones had, uh, possibly the same number of people in it, as close as they could to, well, uh, uh, I think we're not even per district. Rizal?
Rizal.
That's the same.
We're only a couple of different.
Yeah. So we have one little, so we don't really have a lot of change, but we do need to accept the ones coming from the state that they recommended to us, um, to make an official, uh, vote for us. So I guess, I entertain a motion for acceptance of policy one one zero point zero zero, custody zones. Motion by Mrs. Dan. Motion by Mrs. Dan, winner second.
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Anderson. All those in favor say aye. Uh, any opposed, motion carries. The next one is a deletion. It is policy D two four zero point zero zero, instructional materials, it is a deletion because it's covered, uh, sorry, and so it's redundant, we can eliminate that one. Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding that one?
Do we know what policy it's redundant about?
Uh, do I know?
Two forty-six.
I'm sorry, I think it's two forty-six.
Is it curriculum destruction?
Um, uh, textbooks, uh, textbook selection. I think it's two forty-six.
This is an old policy, I don't know if you've heard of it.
Yeah. Uh, made it pretty much, yeah.
Seventy-six?
Yeah, seventy-six, I think.
It's possible.
I have to remember. Okay. Forty-five hundred per zone, ten people. All right, thank you, appreciate that, that's, I have a little. I have a long one in mind, totally. So, I would entertain a motion for deletion of policy E two four zero point zero zero, instructional materials. Motion by Mrs. Anderson. Don't forget, you're supposed to assign a policy. Madam Chair, I make a motion for policy D two four zero point zero zero to be deleted. Second, by Mrs. Anderson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The next several have minor changes in them, that we can, that we can go ahead and serve these. Harvey, are you okay? Does anyone have any questions on the sick leave bank still? Harvey? We're taking, so, it's the last one. Yeah, I was gonna, is it, we have to write. Excuse me? Uh, you want to note that, um, policy D four four, you know, social rights, has been through, thinking of changes and eyes looking at it, that we are content.
I think we had an agreement, then we, we got it the way we wanted. Are we good with that one?
At the time, it is best, um, that we would like to see in the future, and we're on it, we want to allow us to put together a definition of state holders and separate documents, uh, and for the parents, parents' rights, uh, policy, uh, ready to be approved.
Okay, all right. And also, we had some discussion, or talk, someone's mentioned as well as me, um, the emergency closure days on the first reading, so I believe that we're going to take a closure with that one. So I would love you reading that one, but I would entertain a motion for acceptance of policy D three one zero point zero zero, school age, entrance placement and transfer, policy D three four zero four four one, super searches, policy D four four zero point zero zero, rental rights, policy D five four 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 one five, certificated sick leave pay, and policy D five nine eight point zero zero, classified sick leave pay, policy D eight three two point zero zero, student wellness, and policy D eight three four point zero zero, nutrition. I would entertain a motion for acceptance of red policies. Leader, I agree.
I agree with you, except for policy has red.
Okay. Motion by Dr. Parker?
Second.
Second, Madam Mrs. Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, and policies are in place. When you look at that with, uh, urgency one again, and put more eyes on it, and then, um, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion by Mrs. Anderson, second, Madam Mrs. Anderson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.